Hereby called to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kittle Hill's Board of Commissioners. Thanks everyone for being here on a beautiful day. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful day on the Outer Banks. It's always nice to feel the weather getting warmer, but while we take a short moment of silence to get started, please keep the folks in Ukraine in your thoughts. I will take a moment. Thank you so much. Board members, you have an agenda? How do you feel about it?
There are movements to approve the agenda.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. We have an agenda, carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comments. We do public comment at the beginning and the end. And if anybody would like to speak about a topic, I don't have anybody signed up, but always offered up to the public. No one moving towards the podium there? We will close the public comment for now, but there'll be another chance at the end of the meeting. Introductions and presentations. I am pleased to introduce that the representatives from the town of Kitty Hawk are here to present an overview of the proposed Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory to be located there in Kitty Hawk and currently at the ACOG Brown Visitor Center. So we're looking forward to hearing from them. We've got Kitty Hawk Town Councilmember Charlotte Walker and Kitty Hawk Town Manager Andy Stewart. If you come to the mic, let us know what.
Come on, Charlotte.
Please pull the mallet back.
Thank you so much for being here. Heard a bit about the project, excited to hear more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. My name's Andy Stewart. I'm the town manager for the town of Kitty Hawk. This is Charlotte Walker. She's a council member who's sort of taken on the role of supporting this project that is in the preliminary planning stages in the town. And what we'd like to do this evening is play a short video for you so you kind of sort of get an idea of the general concept of what this tributary, Tribute Museum and Observatory is. And then Charlotte, she's been working with the group that's behind the project itself. And so we're just here to answer any questions that you may have. We're looking for support in order to make some improvements at that rest area. As you know, the existing facility is older, so that the museum and the observatory would sort of also be combined as a welcome center as well, with obviously the museum portion probably in behind that. So we're just here to answer any questions you may have. We appreciate the support. And we'll show the video and then after that, answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thanks.
Kitty Hawk was the first...
You're guessing it's not just all...
Kitty Hawk was the first choice of Wilbur and local right for the testing and demonstration that man could actually fly. People want to experience those 12 seconds that change the world, and they travel far and wide to do just that. Isn't it time that Kitty Hawk had a place to showcase this incredible life-changing part of our history? The proposed Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory will be the world's largest display, housing 12 historically accurate Wright Brothers aircraft. The ideal location for this development is the site known as the Kitty Hawk Visitor Center. The plans will include a newly designed welcome center within the current property that is owned by the state of North Carolina. In addition to the exhibition gallery, this 30,000-plus-square-foot museum will include a world-class observatory, STEM training classrooms, a multipurpose theater, an aircraft building workshop, and an outdoor performance area. There will be an elegant cafe, as well as an extensive library and archive. The observatory will light up the night sky and appeal to visitors eager for family-friendly entertainment and education. In the mission control room, guests will be able to put themselves in the Wright Brothers shoes by flying one of four white flyer simulators. The glen year monument to a century of flight is also located on the visitor's center property. It will be the perfect complement and an additional focal point of the adventure. This magnificent monument deserves the spotlight and to be seen by many. The overall site planning will include significant parking for visitors, school buses, RVs, and tour buses. Electric vehicle charging stations will also be made available. As if these things were not enough, once the location is secured, this multimillion-dollar project will be fully funded through private investors that want to make this vision a reality. This project will be completed and operated at no additional cost to taxpayers. This Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory will be a tremendous gift to our community and to the state of North Carolina. It will surely spark wonder and imagination in the young and old alike for many years to come.
Pretty exciting.
It is exciting.
Very nice.
I love that they've kind of used the flyer as the inspiration for the architecture. That's really great. I've met with Ken, oh gosh, six months ago or so. They looked at, if I'm correct, they looked at Dayton first.
They did.
And had trouble finding a place there. They looked here in Kittle Hill. I tried to steer them towards the partnering with the park service over here on that land between the highways, but they were reluctant because they thought it would take too long, federal government moves too slowly for them. So unfortunate wouldn't be here, but we're excited that it's still going to make it to the Outer Banks.
I think it'll benefit us all.
Yeah.
Really will be a draw for the whole county.
They do have some grand plans there. Do you all have questions?
The only question I had was answered the video about the monument to a century of life.
Right. Great, they're going to tie that in.
It'll be incorporated in that, and I think that's neat, that's good.
Then it'll still have visitor's center functions there too.
We're hoping to have the visitor's center and that match, the architecture match, and kind of put it all together. So, and I do have a handout for you. I may bring them up. It's the things that are actually included, that we tried to include.
I think it's that say...
This list keeps growing.
The list keeps growing. They have ambitious plans.
Yes, they do.
And fortunately, deep pockets.
And the investors, we can't secure the investors until we secure the property, and we can only hope that that will move smoothly. We're asking that they lease it.
That the state leases it.
But lease it through, so that we can do this. And anybody else see what I have? We have an extra.
Thank you, ma'am. Have it. Do you need it?
I'll take it.
The Park Service Superintendent and this group has met, and so it's not really, we understand that the site of the first flight was here across the street, and we're really going to try to all work together to, you know, there's really not a whole lot to do here. You know, we have a great beach, but this is going to give just something else for people to go to and see. And then also, we envision that all of our schools, the school system, would be able to make a visit to this type of museum. You see them down in Florida a lot, and probably up in North Carolina, science and engineering type museums, and this is sort of the concept. And they also have a strong focus on the aircraft as well. So we think it's going to be great for the whole beach and going to be great for the area and going to give us something to be proud of as you come in from the north. So that's all we have. You have anything else?
Okay, unless you have questions.
It's an incredible piece of property. Like I said, it'll be like a jewel there coming in. I had business that involved bus tours a while back, and I know that all those, there are a lot of student groups that come here to Elizabethan Gardens and Chico Camico, various other things. I'm sure this will just be another reason to bring those shoulder season visitors to the area as well.
We also plan to partner with a university, with the planetarium, and offer astronomy and even flight training. We would be able to do flight training there and partner with the Wright Brothers Monument and the Park Service with the airstrip over here. So we've got lots of really neat plans.
A lot of cool stuff going on there.
Yeah.
Really great to see. Always want to bring something of that scale to the area. The board members, I think you saw in your packet, have got a resolution in support of this museum and observatory. Basically covers the same issues that they just mentioned. And you usually don't make the motion, but I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution. We've got a second from Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Glad to be supporting you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ongoing piece of business. We talked about it last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before, about offering, we have an offer to purchase a small piece of property on the oceanfront by a citizen, and we're going to get it started in the bid process. Is that right?
Yes, sir. If the board approves the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of Route 315 North Virginia Day Trail, including the acceptance of the offer, and authorize the upset bid process would be in order. And that would require a motion to adopt the resolution.
So you see the resolution there that we're looking for a motion to adopt? Let me out of the barn, I'll make the motion. For two years, I didn't make any motions, and now I'm just going to make them all.
There I will move it to approve ongoing business. Item number one, an offer to purchase 3315 North Virginia Day Trail in the resolution authorizing the upset bid process.
Excellent. I'm going to set it better myself. You have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We've got a second from the senior?
Oh, it's A B O.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, the Kittle Hill pedestrian plan.
Yes, sir. Planning Director Meredith Gons is going to do the presentation for us this evening.
A long assistant planning director, Cameron Ray.
We're going to assist planning director Cameron Ray. Where's Penny and Ellie?
They probably have been very helpful because they use the pedestrian, just at least.
So Meredith, Commissioners, we bring this to you because it came up at your recent retreat about our sidewalk system and our multi-use path system that we have in Kittle Hill. And so I just thought we would take the pedestrian plan, which was adopted in 2012, and try to give you basically a 10-year kind of update. I've handed out two things. One is a PowerPoint that I've given you. The other one is just sheer raw data. It will show you, the first page shows you the changes overall between in a decade. And then the 10 pages following actually gives you a block-by-block change in the sidewalk amounts by block. So it's just, if you love number crunching, you will really, really enjoy those pieces of paper. I am not going to go through them in detail at all, but I will give you a brief summary of where we are now and a little bit about the pedestrian plan and what it was created for. The plan provides guidance for pedestrian facilities as well as a prioritization. The plan identifies the needs of the community and provides recommendations for projects, programs, policies to create a pedestrian-friendly community. The plan's goals are to implement a safe, accessible pedestrian system that includes sidewalk, multi-use pathways, and safe intersections. I have got a big red simple one. Oh, there we go. Oh, too far, sorry. We have, to give you an example, a sidewalk. This is a Sidewalk Club US-158. And then our multi-use path, this happens to be the one that's along Collington Road. Our safe intersections, there's multiple ways to look at a safe intersection. One is having our ADA pads at each intersection with the designated crosswalk. Another safe intersection that is in the plan deals with the lighted crosswalks, which, as you know, the board has recently done on NC-12, and we're hoping to do back here in the government complex soon. And to give you the distinction between sidewalks and multi-use paths, pedestrian, sidewalk is a pedestrian path parallel to a street. It is to provide an alternative means for travel. They're typically five foot wide, the width for two pedestrians to pass each other, concrete or asphalt, four inches thick in general. Buffer for vehicular from the roadway can either be a planted strip or a raised curb and gutter. They are also required to be ADA compliant. Some examples of our sidewalks here in town. Surely, I'm just not smart enough to make this work.
Let me give it a shot.
Give it to the smart one.
Well, they have to go manual. Terry, Mr. Tyler, he's got us.
You'll see West Third Street's under construction, Neptune Drive, which is by the 711 to the Ramada, Baum Street, East Baum Street. East Helga Street was just finished last year. The 158 sidewalks that you've seen before, we have several. East Side, East Martin Street, which was just finished last year. I guess Helga was two years ago. And then we also have the east side of US-158. Multi... Let's see if it's... Roll the batteries. Multi-use paths, they provide, they're paved road-like facilities designed for pedestrian and bicyclists. The alternative means for transportation and recreation. And that's kind of the distinction. They're intended for bicycles, and they're also intended for recreation. Sidewalks are not. They're pedestrian-only, and they're means from A to B. Primary use is walking, cycling, skateboarding, rollerblading, et cetera. They are 10-foot wide by the Ashtoe standard with a five-foot-wide grated shoulder, concrete, asphalt, and/or boardwalk. We have a little bit of all of that on our Bay Drive, West First Street, multi-use path. We have a wooden walkway over the Bickett Street ditch. We have a wooden walkway at the First Street NC DOT canal. Some examples of our multi-use paths are Veterans Drive, which is on the west side of Veterans Drive that leads all the way to the football field. West Collington Road, which goes from Veterans to NC-12. Ocean Bay Boulevard goes to NC-12. Centennial Path, which was done in 2003, is on the east side of Veterans Drive and on the west side of Mustian Street, and also provides a sidewalk system through the government complex, including Town Hall Drive and between the library and the senior center. Aviation Park is a multi-use path, West First Street, Bay Drive. And then finally, the Wright Brothers Pass, which was the first path that was created. Terry, I think you were on the board, 1995. It started in 1993 with the conception of it and worked with the Park Service to get our initial path put in, and that is from West First Street to Veterans Drive. Okay, so now progress since the 2012 plan. We've made significant progress in sidewalks along US-158 since the town enacted a sidewalk capital reserve fund of $100,000 per year plus multiple grants that we've received for sidewalks and multi-use paths. The sidewalk system has been completed on both sides of US-158 south of Collington Road. That's a very impressive feat, I would like to say. Sidewalks on the west side of US-158 north of Collington is nearly complete. There's two areas missing, one in front of the Wright Brothers Memorial, which is 4,073 feet, and between West Durham and West Avalon, which is 1,283 feet. I would like to say that that is, I'm not really calling that a missing piece. There is a service road that runs from West Durham to Avalon. It would be nearly impossible and probably not very safe to actually put a sidewalk in there, but it, the elevation and the distancing would be difficult between the service road and US-158. Part of the service road is in US-158. So that actually serves as a means for travel off of the bypass, which was the goal of the pedestrian plan, was to move people that are not in a vehicle off the bypass to a safe location. So you can count it as missing, I kind of don't.
This has got to be taped too.
So a quick data, in 2012, west, the west side of US-158 south of Croatan, we had 4,123 feet completed. We now have 6,371 feet completed at 100%. The east side, we had 3,076 feet completed. Again, this is south of Collington on the east side. We completed 6,219 feet of sidewalk on the east side to be 100% complete since 2012. North of Collington Road, we have, on the west side, we had 4,873 feet in 2012. We now have 8,965 feet. We're 69% complete. And on the east side, north of Collington, we had 2,858 feet, and we now have 4,328 feet. We're only 33% complete on the east side, north of Collington Road. Comparison of overall sidewalks improvements, the west side, entire town went from 43% complete, I'm not going to read all the numbers, to 75% complete. The 75, the 25% majority of that is the Wright Brothers property. In the east side, we went from being 29% complete to 46% complete. We've done approximately 2.1 miles of sidewalk along US-158 since 2012. Other sidewalks that we've put in that may or may not have been, they weren't calculated in all the data that I gave you, so I just gave it to you. East Martin Street, we just completed in 2021, 865 feet. East Neptune is an older sidewalk, 830 feet, but it was not part of the data I gave you, so I thought I would give that to you. East First Street is an attached sidewalk, which is basically a wide shoulder, but it's five feet. That is, there's 100 feet without sidewalk. I think it's probably just covered. East Third Street, we are under construction right now. That, I mean, East Third Street, we have detached and attached. It is detached from the bypass to Sobal Drive, and then from Sobal Drive to NC-12, it is an attached facility. East West Third Street, as you know, is under construction. That is a huge project, and it's going to be absolutely wonderful. People, the little couple blocks that are already done, people are already commenting on how wonderful it is. So kudos for that. East Helga Street has been done for quite some time. West Helga, we did a couple blocks, 510 feet in 2001. West Baum Street, we did through grant funding on the north side in 2012. I said West Baum Street, I mean West Baum Street plus the little portion of Blue Jay plus the little portion that connects it to Centennial Path. I decided not to break that all out. I thought y'all would understand all that. The Bay Dog Multi-Use Path was finished in five phases, starting in 2008 through 2018. And that is 15,206 linear feet of multi-use path. The Veterans Drive Multi-Use Path was a detached path completed in 2002. We have 4.1 miles of multi-use path or sidewalk not associated with US-158, which is also a very impressive number. I'm going to turn it over to Cameron now to go over, in your pedestrian plan, table six in the back of your plan gives you the priorities that were set in 2012. And Cameron's going to go over with you what we've accomplished from that list. And you can see from the highlights, it's been pretty comprehensive.
Yes, so like Meredith said, this is table 6.1 in the 2012 pedestrian plan. This is our checklist that we're using when we're looking at capital projects and street projects. A lot of these that you see highlighted are portions of our streets projects. As we know, that's the most beneficial time to get into a sidewalk project as well. Starting from 1 to 15 on the short-term project recommendations, those are not a priority list, but they're all listed as short-term recommendations. You'll see on the top of the list, I think it's great that we were able to complete that project here in the last year, installing the streetlights. A lot of these projects Meredith just referenced. But for example, like number six, you'll see it is highlighted in blue as partially complete. That's Martin Street. You know, we did the eastern portion during our street project, and we'll keep, you know, that western portion in mind as we locate streets projects and future projects in town. So those are partially complete. So you can go through this list and see how we're looking at these as priorities for projects in town. You know, some of them aren't necessarily involved in streets projects, like the remainder of the Centennial Path, they own Baum and Blue Jay and Mustian. That was a grant that we received to finish up that project with the money that was in the sidewalk capital reserve fund. That money has gone to good use every year that it's been in the budget. So just going through these, if you have any questions about any of these projects, you might flash into the maps. There's also a map just previously to this table in the plan that does outline the entire town and shows them. You'll see there, they're listed as short-term, the long-term, but it does identify all those corridors. So, you know, starting from your north side of town, you can follow the Bay Drive Multi-Use Path. You can see, like number 25 is going to be Helga Street. Number 13 is Hayman. And this just lays the framework of what the vision was in 2012 from what our pedestrian plan was. And this is what staff has been following as we've been implementing this, mostly with streets projects, but also filling in some of the gaps on US-158 and some of these small corridors that you also find on our west side and also on the east side. You know, looking at these maps, there was a well-mapped-out route of looking at where we can fit a multi-use path and then also where sidewalks really fit. And you'll see most of our east-west corridors are going to be sidewalks. And then our multi-use path was their Bay Drive down Collington Road connecting back to the extended paved shoulder on Highway 12. And that is going to be your regional bicycle trail as it's listed.
Right. And one thing, one other thing I would like to add to the placement of multi-use versus sidewalks is we put multi-use paths are earmarked for low-speed roads because they are for recreation. And that's why they've been put there. They're the corridor, I can't remember what the tourism board named it, but there is now, now that the Oregonlet Bridge has been replaced, there's now only a small piece in Kitty Hawk from the end-of-town line to the drop-off into Moore Shores that that currituck to the ferry now has some form of pathway for pedestrians and cyclists. And that's a, that's a really impressive...
I got to say, it was, there's more there than I would have thought. You know, unless you go and look at every single street, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah, and a lot, if you look back at the table for what has not been completed... Yeah, and, and a lot, if you look at, back at the table for what has not been completed, one is a very concentrated project that deals with paths around, sidewalks around the school, so that you can get from Martin Street to the schools through some sort of sidewalk. It was, it was filtering through mostly Sixth Avenue, but it was taken into Swan, Sixth Avenue, Martin Street, and airstrip. And they were, they were a big sidewalk. It's a big sidewalk project that is, the goal was to connect to the schools and to get that connection there. And it went through Ocean Acres and took you back into the woods, too, so.
And then I'll add something about the pedestrian plan. I mean, tonight we were talking a lot about sidewalks and multi-use paths, just kind of laying out what's out there, what we're planning, and what really the difference is. But, you know, that document of the pedestrian plan lays out, you know, town standards and moving forward, that all of our sidewalks are uniform, and also multi-use paths, and the standards for grade, for ADA, and your changes at intersection, and how they should be, you know, visible. So, those are followed as, you know, strict guideline moving forward. So, we do have that consistency in our sidewalks and multi-use paths. But it also lays out, you know, funding sources for grants. It's a really, it's a, it's a really good conclusive document that I'm sure we'll update, you know, in the near future to reflect all these, these progress we have completed and to see what else might be out there of interest. But it is a very conclusive document that, that helps us, you know, always use that money that's in the Sidewalk Reserve Fund, so. But any discussion or questions about the plan, I think we can, we can dive in.
And, and the Wright Brothers portion, we are in the process of scheduling a meeting again with the superintendent over at Wright Brothers to open that discussion again. Every time, they've been super supportive. We just need a little bit more than support because we need some land. We have, it'll be cost prohibitive if we can't scoop one part of it, one, two, park service. But we did it before, behind Wright Brothers, the initial path, the Wright Brothers path, that is on park service land until it makes the turn at Collington. That is solely on park service land, actually.
They've got a lot of big projects in there coming up, so they should have plenty of engineering might coming in, too.
So, that, hopefully you have that meeting in the next week or so, and they've been open to it, we're just trying to get schedules straight. They're very busy. They're, they're very busy over there, so we're trying to see when we can fit in.
Super, well, really great document, really interesting to read, the 2012 one, too, to not dive into it for a long time. But really incredible progress. I remember lamenting the hopscotch pre-2012, and it's nice to know that it's all completed. And we're all eager to see Wright Brothers part get done and see where we can go, go next. And those connectors you talked about for the walkable parts of the, the south of the schools, the kids that can walk to school, always very helpful, too.
I, I'd really like to finish West First Street and connect it to Canal.
Yeah, that sounds good, too.
Because we've got it all the way to the back of Publix right now. So, we just get to get from the back of Publix to Canal.
And I don't want to connect Hayman Park to Bay Drive. You can look all over, there's all sorts of good projects. But they'll get done, you know, that's why we have a plan in place, and we're, we're trucking along, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's double-edged sword, too, because on one hand you say, well, who needs it? Once you build it, you really find out. Because when you drive down Bay Drive, you can see how many people use it and didn't use it before.
Well, I'm having the opportunity, like, that they were talking about West Third Street, where it's in conjunction with the road improvement. That's just Baum, some of those other ones. You know, when we're able to do it in conjunction with the road work, having that resource there then is, is really good. For various reasons, it is so much more efficient. You do save money, and you're not in there disrupting the neighborhood.
And, and we've had a lot of partnerships, we've had a lot of grants, but we've also had a lot of partnerships. When we, one of our big legs that we, we were equally as concerned about as Wright Brothers was getting across the Dare Center. There's a large ditch there, kind of needed to meander on their land a little bit. We ended up not meandering on their land, but we met with them multiple times, and they ended up contributing to building that sidewalk because they realized the benefit that it would have for them, too, is to have people being able to walk safely, and that they were the only gap to be able to walk safely to, to their stores. And they were very willing to help, so it was.
That was, that was the next group that owned it. The first group, we're not so interested, we're so willing.
They have to be owned sometimes.
And the first, the first time we actually bid that project, it was standalone sidewalk drainage project, and we had, Meredith had secured Visitor Bureau grant monies. But the bids came in so high that we just couldn't in good conscience recommend it to the board. And the owners of the Dare Center at the time were not interested in contributing. Through Meredith's discussion with the Visitors Bureau, they allowed us to use the grant money for sidewalks. I guess, I think that's what you told me was the Baum. We went to Baum. Scooted ahead a number of years forward, we're doing the work at the fire station for the water tower. All of that area was going to be under construction. It just seemed like a perfect time, for those of you who remember, that we piggybacked that on that work at the time. Then, the owners of the Dare Center were interested in contributing, and it, it just all fell into place. And, you know, what you have is not only extremely saved, but so much more aesthetically pleasing than the ditch that you just could never keep all the trash out of, so. It's, sometimes it just seems slow, like the wheels just aren't churning, but they are. And once it's, once it's done, you see the difference that it made. But the, the planning staff and the other, other staff members have worked very hard on securing some really good grant monies to help us. But, but board, the boards have also been, you know, supportive in, in funding these projects, so.
As we go into this next budget cycle, I know it's been an unusual year. Hopefully, we can make up for some lost time. When we weren't able to contribute as much to those funds, we're able to do more this year. Couple things I was going to bring up, just as a discussion. One is, what I'm hearing between the lines is, because we've, I know Mr. Gray has mentioned, you know, having a little town envied, next has beautiful multi-use paths. They don't have all the driveway cuts we have here, particularly Collington to the south part of the line, but you're saying, you know, mostly we want to put that energy of wider multi-use paths away from the highway because it's more recreational.
Correct. You, you kind of don't want to promote recreation on 158. In, in our corridor of 158, we are obviously more commercial than our neighbor, and we also have a lot more utilities. A multi-use path on one side of the road also doesn't, people would be crossing to get to businesses. In, in our neighboring town, there's no businesses on the other side of the road, so it's a very smooth leading up to a, you know, state park, things like that. It, it works for them, it would be a more difficult fit in our commercial corridor to have a multi-use path, because you probably don't want people to recreate when there's a driveway about every 50 to 100 feet.
Yeah, it's tight.
Yeah, I mean, the, the engineering's tight, but it, you know, it's, you also, I had a discussion with, with Pete Barkhiver about this, and it was a lengthy discussion that came down to that multi-use paths are about three or four times as expensive as sidewalks. Because you think about just the math of a 10-foot wide multi-use path and five-foot wide on each side, 20 feet, a sidewalk is less than half of that. So, you think about your drainage, your grading, and your just, just materials. It's, it's a hard design to fit, but, you know, you think about what we've done from Collington Road South, that cost a third of doing sidewalks on both sides of the road as it would have been to do one multi-use path. That really would have been leading people to non-stop stop signs at every intersection, because when you have an intersection or a bike on a multi-use path, you have to have a stop sign. So, you're not really creating a mode of transportation for that cyclist.
Yeah, you have to have a stop sign by the standards because you promote bicycle travel, and bicycles are required to meet road travel requirements, so there are stop signs. And you'll see stop signs on Bay Drive.
Got me thinking about, there's a paper street that's one block west of the bypass that goes north and south. I always wondered if that's never going to be a street? Is it possible there would be a multi-use path at some point?
Is that the portions of, like, Blue Jay behind Walgreens?
Yeah.
You know, there's a couple portions that are improved or semi-improved.
More likely it'll be street someday, or?
I'm not, I think in some sections, yes, but there is a, there's a right-of-way map that the board looked at several years back that identified what those paper streets were, you know, what the vision was for those, so that's something we could get out, too.
That leads to the last part, which is beach rather. Any thoughts there on the short and long term?
So, the plan, the plan has in, in the long term, I believe, sidewalks on both sides of NC 12. To be honest with you, I don't think sidewalks will fit on both sides of NC 12 unless DOT is willing to move, shift NC 12, so.
It's not centered in the road.
No, and that, and that was one of the problems we had on Bay Drive with our, with our multi-use paths.
We had to move the road.
We had to move the road, and you start, you know, right-of-ways that are already improved, it becomes very costly to shift your road and also put in a path that meets those ASHTO standards, but.
The sidewalk on NC 12, DOT, in, in a decade-old conversation, literally, with them, they were not opposed to putting a sidewalk on the east side to about Fifth. And after Fifth Street, they had issues because of erosion and sand infiltration from smaller beach. Now, with the beach nourishment that we've been doing and the stabilization we've been doing, that might be a different conversation to have. That's a big, 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 big project.
Yes, a lot of things.
Big. There was so much infrastructure under 12. You know, we have, we have the natural gas lines down 12. We have, we have a lot of infrastructure in, in 12.
And it's just not tremendously wide right-of-way either.
And, and you, you, you would think that you'd want to put it on the east side where people would be able to cross at an intersection and walk to the beach.
But, yeah, stakes may vary.
It's, it's in the plan.
Yeah, it is in the plan.
It is in the plan.
And it, it does identify, you know, the extended shoulder that was done back just previously, was that 2008?
Yes.
The extended shoulder on 12.
Which goes to Fifth.
Yeah. And, and we, you know, we have, the building and grounds has, has been striping that, you know, laying it out better for cyclists and walkers for which way you're supposed to be going as, as an effort to get folks to move, to use that, that path. And I see it, you know, quite often, you know, people do use it.
If they know, they'll use it. All right, we'll have round of questions, you guys? I think we're all big fans of trying to emphasize that in the budget as, as we can. It's something that really helps folks live here, and as well as visitors, and safety, and so many good things come out of it. Thanks for all the hard work on it, to have a comprehensive understanding of what exists when it got there and how we're going forward.
If you start looking at all the numbers that I gave you and have any questions, please give me a call.
Super.
Thank you.
Item number two on our new business is grant project ordinance for the Town of Killaville's American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, current by a state and local fiscal recovery fund.
Yes, sir, thank you. Assistant planning, excuse me, Assistant Town Manager Charlene Allen is going to address this item. She's been working very closely with the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director on this. And Charlene, thank you.
Okay. Well, the awaited final rule that we've been waiting on for the, the, the American Recovery Act funds has been established, and we have guidance. About a month ago, we received that guidance. So, we've put together the, the grant project ordinance that has to be approved. We have guidance from the UNC School of Government. And what you have before you hear is, basically, a local, a local government is fully allowed to supplant existing local government revenue sources for any eligible general government services. And a unit can identify expense items that will trigger these requirements and free up our general fund revenues to be used for complex projects. And I think we had discussed that at a few meetings ago about, you know, designating those funds for salaries and benefits. And then that, that would free up, that would go in the fund balance and free up more of the general fund balance funds to be used for special projects. That's what we have here. And this is, this is a document that we have to do and approve and work with based on the School of Government requirements.
Okay, so we just need to approve this, let's get over, see what it was called, the ordinance, right?
Yes, sir.
Be an ordained. And once we do that, then there are two big chunks of money that move, and hopefully we can really do some good with, with those funds. Anybody have any questions about this for a motion?
No question, too. It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, definitely need to take the School of Government's advice on this one. Get it done.
Nothing further, Mayor. I'd make a motion that we approve new business item number two, grant project ordinance for Town of Killaville's American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Excellent, there's a motion on the floor. I'll second that, we've got a second from the other end. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you put us there?
There's some sidewalk money.
There's some sidewalk money.
Thank you, Charlene.
Let the fighting over money begin.
Just, just to reiterate, that has been very confusing, very complicated, but with the help from the School of Government and with our excellent finance people along with Charlene, they've worked it out, so.
We have all the, all the technical pieces in place to use more fungible, in a sense. It's certainly good to have her there, isn't it?
It's very good to have, it's a good staff.
Thanks for all the hard work on that. I know just reading it hurts my brain, so I can imagine what you guys had to do. Some tough stuff. Committee reports.
I'm going to, you're Mike Sue Kelly, to address us about the CAC.
I want to get a scrapbook going of all the trees. A Facebook group, a digital scrapbook.
Sue Kelly, 211 C Village, on behalf of the CAC. Well, the first thing I have to say, Mr. Mayor, is that I made a mistake last meeting. I tell you that it was 100 trees. It was only 26 trees, and I apologize. We paid $102 each for them, you know, really nice, big trees. All of them have been delivered, and I think we are still hearing positive things from folks about the trees. So, I just got carried away.
You were good.
But 25 or so trees every year still. I hope you will continue to agree a great idea, and I am sorry for the mistake. I just want to say something about the sidewalk thing. One of the very first things that the CAC discussed when we were created was sidewalks. Now, we can't take any credit for this because the town was already into sidewalks when we thought about it. But just to commend the town for all the tremendous work that has been done and is being done on sidewalks, it's really cool, you all. It's, it's a great thing. And I only have two other very quick things. We are still looking for a replacement member for the CAC. So, if you know anybody who you think might be good, please ask them to consider filling out the form that the town uses for people who are interested in boards and commissions. And lastly, our next meeting, we did not meet this month because, mostly because of early voting issues, but our next meeting will be the 26th in May. That's a Thursday morning at 8:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My view, Sue.
I always like to say, it's 250 trees every 10 years. Federal government always does, it's billions of dollars over 10 years.
I'll chime in that since our last meeting, we talked about appointments. I'm keeping a handful of applications in my car all the time. And when I meet somebody I feel is a candidate, I'm putting it right in their hand. So, I want to encourage other folks, don't have to be bored, anybody. You know, have those at arm's length, please give out to people. You know, have those at arms length, please give out to people when those opportunities pop up.
Yes. Imagine there's a digital way to do that, too. We'll put it in some emails. There's a link to a website. Super. Any other committee reports? All right. Commissioner's agenda. I think we started out here last time.
Just early voting starts smart. Just saying, just saying.
I would say.
Right here, right here, you kill the what else?
You'd say independents can vote in either one.
Yes, independents can vote in either one.
That's right.
So.
Nothing here. Now, now, all right. On the mayor's agenda, I've got a couple of resolutions and proclamations that you have in your packet there. First is proclaiming, declaring the May 1st through the 7th as hurricane prepared this week. It's tough to say that word out loud. After you haven't thought about it for a while, you've got a big, you know, from the county, you know, get your, get your permits. I'm like, is it that time again already? Oh, gosh. So, so that gives all the whereas, whereas. And we want to make people aware of the resources they have at Ready NC.gov and a number of other things, just to be prepared. I love that it says have $200 in cash. It's good, you know, you gotta pick a number. Turn it off.
Or inflation.
Will get you through at least the first day or two of hurricane. So let's go along with that while I'm here, that's all it's. So that's the first one. And the second one is a proclamation, she's declaring May 15th Peace Officer Memorial Day and May 15th through 21, 2022 as release week. These folks keep us safe and have done extra for us for the last couple of years during the pandemic. And we can't thank them enough. So any way we can draw attention to that, I appreciate Emergency Manager Director and Fire Chief Troy Tilly for setting that up for us and putting it all together. So we have both of these in here and I would recommend approval of these proclamations. And that is my motion for their adoption.
Have a second?
Have a second? What's your, have a second, two seconds? I only need two more thirds. Two more, you don't have 12. Two seconds and two thirds. Any further discussion? All in favor, reiterate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? Thank you so much for supporting those proclamations. That is all I have there, so we will move on to the town attorney's agenda.
Still doing the math on the two-thirds. Messing with my mind, sorry. Um, no, I've got nothing.
That is new math. That's what they call new math. All right.
Can't make it out.
It does not, that's pretty good. The town manager's agenda. And we will go into the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of items on the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 11th, 2022 meeting and the partnership organization's annual report. This evening, we have from the executive director of the Communities in Care Clinic of Dare, Lynn Jennings, has submitted the 2122 annual report highlighting the clinic's operations, specifically as they speak to Killable Hills, which is a part of the requirement of the partnership. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion in double seconds again? Pick one there. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? And we have a consent agenda, thank you so much.
Mayor, if I may, before you move on, we did not put a second public comment section on the agenda because you have your public forum. Assuming that that would be used as a
Sure.
Public comment. But if, if you desire to have another public comment before going to the forum, that's certainly.
It usually would be before the forum.
Well, we had the one before the agenda, before the meeting, in case someone wanted to speak on the agenda items.
Usually the second one becomes.
The second one becomes a public.
I think we wrap it together. That sounds reasonable to me. You're not speaking, one is speaking, the other is speaking.
You're speaking.
So we have such a huge crowd.
And Zoom and Shemade, I won't say anything.
But Pittsburgh's are out. Torches. So I guess we will go into public forum, you know, think for all the city public forum. So it's us, chickens talking amongst ourselves. We've had, we've had a number of big picture meetings. And we had a, had a retreat. And we, thank you, sir. We've talked about, we have a budget workshop. I've already seen so much great work that came out of the budget workshop that the staff is working on. The evening is invited, so I'm sure that we are right around the corner from lots of things to review and talk about there. We've, oh. I've been talking with staff about a number of different ideas that, that hopefully we can, get a little more solidified, having to do with incentives to help with essential housing. So the, the general gist of it is we have four or five things that Meredith identified that, that could be fleshed out that, that are, what can we offer a property owner that would encourage them to deed restrict? Build a part of that, I guess it could be part of your property or the whole property, to say there would never be short-term rental. So you and I, we've all talked about this a little bit better. I just wanted to let you guys know that we're moving in that direction. And probably in the next year or so, we'll have some more, more to talk about. She looks to be like, what are you talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
I was talking about those incentives we were talking about.
As in, as in more, would you like staff to bring those ideas to the board? In a, in an informal type way for y'all to discuss?
Right, yeah, I think we're, we're not quite to the formal level, but we will kind of kick around all of the ideas that we can put together that are in the incentive utilization column. Because the longer I've thought about it, and I've been thinking about it for years, that it's not so much about price, it's about the existence of some different category of housing that is protected from market forces. And no one's going to do that out of the goodness of their heart. So we need to figure out how we can put a little incentive on the table, some easing of restrictions for property owners that would allow them to put an ADU or fill up in a way that helps in the essential housing, general topic, in trade for that deed restriction. Deed restriction being the one of the top tools, I think, that we have to have a portion of our housing stock that will always be available year-round. Because like I've mentioned many times, left of market forces, all of our own houses would probably be Airbnb. Because it makes more money than us living in it.
So understanding what we will do is come back to the board at a future meeting with just some ideas and bullet points. Bullet, yeah, bullet points. From there, maybe get some more concrete direction for staff to bring you back something. And then at the comfort level with the board, then it would go to the, to the planning board for.
Then, yeah, right, we take some ideas and send it towards the planning board and they can.
But we're not, we're not there yet.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a little work kicking around. I just want to give it to the board again to think, when you talk to people about what they want or how they want to help, they're trying to sell the idea that if, if you're struggling to pay your tax on your house and you're retired, you know, would you be interested in renting a room out in your house? And if you did for a long-term, for an employee, you know, how do we make that easier for people? So it both helps them pay their mortgage and pay their taxes, but also helps the community in that way that there's some starting, starting housing when you can't afford to buy a house right out of your first job. We're trying to bridge that gap in any way that we can.
Like, for example, maybe helping ease some of the restrictions to put an additional entrance or a separate entrance from the main entrance of the house or something.
Right on the permit laws, rules like that. Apply with accessory dwelling unit, doesn't have to be separate.
Yeah, and broadening our, our allowances for where they can be located, but with a deed restriction that they have to be long-term. Instead of an accessory dwelling unit that you know instantly is going to be a VRBO or Airbnb. But if you were to expand where you allow them with some restrictions that they have to be a long-term tenant to try to, then you're helping the person who's trying to get the house with offsetting some cost. And you're also providing essential housing or long-term housing. Not just opening the door wide, but being very methodical about it. Because the only way we can ensure that something that's constructed would be used for what your, this board has, has set as a goal, which is essential housing or long-term housing, is to put something on it that requires it to be. We can't police that unless we require it.
Right, and it was part of the ADU, I understand that. But I was, I was talking specifically about, you, you mentioned renting a room. You know, that may require somebody to put a separate entrance where somebody could access the room other than the main entrance of a house, for example. So maybe you could help with some, you know, regulations or easing of regulations like that. Oh, you can, okay.
You can be going to a door any day.
Okay. There you go, there you go.
Unless it's on the second floor, then it's long fall.
The building code is a jump in there.
The building code, but, but you can, you can do that.
Yeah, well, I know you can do it, but I mean, we might need to make it easier, you know?
Well, we can't make the building code easier, but the review process is the same day.
Yeah, the, the permitting and so forth, you know?
That's the same day for me.
Yeah, you can work with that.
Right, so yeah, like, it's good that this discussion sort of leads to the fact that I think a lot of homeowners might not know that. And this, we can look at a kind of a marketing effort that says, do you want to be helped? People want to help. I really believe that people love to be mad, but they also love to help. And hopefully we just steer them towards the ladder.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, do you want to help? Here's how you can help. If you've got an extra room in your house, you know, we, we could help you find a way to, to have it be accessible and, you know, connect you with, you know, recommend. I don't know if we could recommend, but we could say, you know, you can have this.
The permit process.
Yeah, and it's not hard to say, because people think that it's hard. A lot of people, either you're in construction or you're not. If you're in construction, you take like this all the time. But if you're not, you can just point out how you can help. You can help buy housing to somebody for the summer or for the season or for year-round. And it helps pay your taxes and that sort of thing. So, I don't know. Trying to throw everything we've got at it. It's a tough problem and.
We'll give you some discussion points and then we can bring out the whiteboard if y'all want to. jot down additional ideas.
That would be good. All right, so we're having a public forum with no public. Anybody else have any ideas they want to bat around? Public, if you're watching on YouTube, email us, text us, tell us what you want to do. A nice long pause, I'll say we will call it a day on public forum. And we're looking for that last, that last motion that I don't make.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion and a second on the paper side. Aye, you're adjourned. Thank you so much.